We brought the full possibility of census to eighty-six, I believe.
Any other questions?
We're not changing the number of kids, are we?
Oh, no.
One-twenty's the limit.
We're fifty-one and we're not going to have any more than that there.
Right, and there's no change in the language of the special permit.
Conditions.
And you've said that you've, there've been no complaints.
I'm sorry, the fire department and the police department, they're all, okay, they're all updated on the fire.
Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? No? Okay, Marion, do you have a special?
Yeah, I drafted a resolution. Whereas Abbot House, located at one hundred North Broadway, has been operating a home for dependent and developmentally disabled children pursuant to a special permit last granted by the planning board on December fourth, two thousand and thirteen, for a five-year period, which expired in December twenty-eighteen. Whereas in January two thousand and nineteen, Abbot House applied to renew its special permit. Whereas Abbot House has operated in accordance with the special permit conditions enclosed by the planning board, most recently on December fourth, two thousand and thirteen. On March sixth, the planning board conducted a public hearing on the application for renewal. The planning board, in accordance with two twenty-four eighty, has determined, A, the use of the premises is consistent with the comprehensive plan, B, all structures are readily accessible for fire and police protection, and comply with the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, C, the uses of such location, size, and character that's in harmony with the district in which it is situated, and will not be detrimental to the development or use of adjacent properties, D, the location and size of the use, the nature, intensity of operations, and its site layout and its relation to access streets is such that both pedestrian and vehicular traffic to and from the use and the assembly of persons there will not be hazardous or inconvenient to or in conflict with the normal traffic of the neighborhood, and finally, adequate all-street parking is provided for the use. The renewal of the special permits of type-two reaction under SEACRA. Therefore, be it resolved that the planning board renews the special permit for Abbot House for a five-year period commencing March sixth, two thousand and nineteen, subject to the following conditions. And then the conditions I have here for the last ten years, do you want me to read them?
I don't think it's necessary. As you said, there's absolutely no change in the language.
Right. The relevant ones, based on questions people asked, is a limit of a hundred and twenty children, and they, that nobody, that children can't attend the public, Irvington Public Schools as of right, but nothing precludes them, Abbot House, from working with the school district. Something about the fence and...
Right, they just have to maintain the fence between the end and the south, neighbors to the south.
And, you know, no parking on the driveway from the southeast, and so.
Okay.
And then, finally, the special permit shall expire on March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, which is five years from tonight.
Can I have a motion on the resolution?
No.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I want to thank you, and I do want to make a comment I made last time again. The village of Irvington, in my six-plus years, has been very good neighbors, Abbot House, and I'd like to think that we are better neighbors than we were, and I want to continue that. And anyone that has any problem can call me directly, and if I'm in my office, I pick up my own phone, and I will respond. I want to thank you very much for being good neighbors, because you have been, and it makes a difference to a lot of people. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for the good work that you do up there, too.
Okay, I guess I could have that and put it in my folder.
Right here.
Give one to the young lady.
And Markie Tickler. Markie Tickler.
Try to get in on time, sorry, please. Thank you, everyone.
All right, next item is two thousand and nineteen dash oh-seven, Richard and Geneviève Dormant, forty-seven Beachwood, I'm sorry, Beachwood Road.
John Malone, Ferguson Malone, Architecture, representing the Dormants. A resubmission from a previous project. We have a few comments left, and they relate to variance requests that we'll need to make with the ZBA. There's a few notes that we got from the Villages Landscape Consultant. I think both of those were fine to follow.
Okay.
That's not a big deal. I didn't have to worry to talk about anything.
No, I don't think so. Only if anybody else has any questions, others just wanted to make a comment. I think our landscape architects' combo was very important about, on the west side of the property, to make sure you extend the, I guess, the woodchips and the planking.
Planking. We spoke to Suzanne about it today, so we'll try to do that.
And I thought you did a good job on floor area issue, even though you're coming in rather fine. The fact of the matter is that a lot of the houses over there are already over the FAR.
Right.
And plus, what you're doing is at the rear of the house, so it's not even visible.
Right, it shouldn't have, you know, even though it's an addition, it shouldn't have impact on any adjacent.
Any other comments from any of the board members?
Yeah. Last meeting, unless something happens, maybe you took care of it. There was some question asked, the construction access, the left side of the house or the right side, and the trees that might be.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. They're going to go through the right side where they were originally planted. But between their arborist and our landscape architect, they both agree if they put down like six inches of woodchips along the entire side of the house and planking over the entire west side.
One tree in particular.
Yes, yeah, that would protect the trees that are there now.
There's a tree that Suzanne thought that we should remove, and the owner wants to keep in place, so we talked to our arborists about pruning the thing back so that the equipment can buy.
It's up against the house.
She thinks it's too much tree that, you know.
If they want to keep it.
And the other thing concerns that, I saw some notes on there, certain things by others, don't you usually like to see others on one set of plans there? I think it was.
We go offline with this. It's difficult, it's yes, the answer's yes, and then we have the opposite effect where you can't read the plans.
Yeah, okay.
This, I'm not.
You're adopted.
Yeah. It's fine for now, we have to come over to the arborist.
Okay.
Especially now that we're getting busy, we have additional assistant building inspectors, it's very hard to follow all this, just between you and I right now.
Okay, well, we can talk our plans here, I'm not sure what the...
I don't have any, it's not, and it's not just John, it's one of Hudson Engineering here. Where is this at? No, it's just a poll on the... It's a timeline issue, so if they merge, they can use the two days of... So we're all electronic, maybe. We can fix off.
Any comments, any other comments from any of the board members? Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? No? I think Marion, well, you still have to go to the ZBA for this, but you have a resolution.
Yeah. That makes it subject to the variances. In February two thousand and nineteen, Richard and Geneviève Demont applied for a site development plan approval to construct additions to their house along with a patio at forty-seven Beachwood Road. The proposal would require variances from the zoning board of appeals for coverage in FAR. Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memorandum dated February fourth, two thousand and nineteen, listed a number of engineering issues with the site plan, which were satisfactorily addressed in a subsequent submission. Suzanne Nolan, the Villages Landscape Consultant, reviewed the plans, and in a memorandum dated February fourth, made a number of comments, most of which were satisfactorily addressed in a subsequent submission. Planning board held... On February sixth and March sixth, the actions of type-two reaction under SEACRA now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Dormant Residence," prepared by Ferguson Malone and by Hudson Engineering, subject to, one, receiving variances from the ZBA for lot coverage and FAR, and, two, complying with the recommendations and requirements listed in the Nolan memorandum attached to Han's March sixth, two thousand and nineteen memorandum.
Have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is two thousand and nineteen dash oh-four, Lawrence and Nancy Lonkey, Fifty-Five Station Road.
Acosta, I'm the engineer for the Lonkeys. On this application, we are removing a listing patio and deck, and we're providing a new deck. And the reason we're here was we were over on lot coverage, and we received that variance from the zoning board last week. And I received comments from the village consultant, and they have three copies that amended. Comments? One of them was to provide a tree detail for tree protection. The other was just to correct the note that there'll be no view preservation impact. And I did submit regarding the wetlands approval because we're in within a hundred. What is that?
Okay. Any comments from anyone on the board on this matter?
No.
Any comments from any of the audience? No? I think Marion, do you have a resolution on this?
Whereas in February two thousand and nineteen, Lawrence and Nancy Lonkey applied for site development plan approval to remove and construct a new deck on their house at Fifty-Five Station Road, which lies in the Villages View Preservation Overlay District. The proposed construction exceeds allowable coverage, therefore requiring a variance, which was granted by the zoning board of appeals on February twenty-sixth. Whereas the proposed construction would occur within a hundred feet of a water-course wetland, and therefore requires a wetlands permit. And Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in the memorandum dated February fourth, listed a number of engineering issues with the site plan, most of which were addressed in a subsequent submission. Suzanne Nolan, the Villages Landscape Consultant, reviewed the plans, and in the memorandum dated February fourth, made a number of comments, which were partly addressed in a subsequent submission. The planning board held a public hearing on the application on February sixth and March sixth, whereas the proposed construction will not impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties, and is a type-two reaction under SEACRA now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants a wetlands permit for and site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawing entitled "Proposed Open Deck at Fifty-Five Station Road," prepared by Stephen A. Acosta, P.E., subject to compliance with the items listed in the Han memorandum dated March sixth, including the comments of Suzanne Nolan attached to the memorandum.
Any, we'll have a motion to adopt the resolution. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item is two thousand and nineteen dash oh-five, John and Stacy Tunis, Twenty-Eight, South Continent Street.
John Tunis, owner and John Power Architect. Last month, you had asked us to revise the plans and the calculations which were done and submitted, and we have a letter from the planning board with the six points, one, two, and three, about the variance, which we are aware of, and I'm wondering if we can apply for, to the zoning board and the planning board simultaneously, or does one precede the other?
Usually, the planning board proceeds the zoning board, but the ZBA likes to have our comments first.
Fair enough.
Make a resolution. Determination.
Point number four, the elimination of the garage reduces the number of parking spaces below two spaces, which requires a variance. We've lived in this house for twenty-one years, it's never held a car. Our neighbor's garage is two feet longer than ours, which has never held a car. You can't open the doors of a car in the garage, so it really isn't a garage. We just want to use it as a workspace, so. It's not going to affect the number of cars on this.
Well, I think that's something, as a planning board, we would be concerned about, and I think the ZBA might be too, because when we, the village just got through with an update of the comprehensive plan, and one of the issues that came up was parking, particularly along Main Street, and while you say it hasn't been used as a garage, I mean, it does represent, though, a potential garage space. And the loss of the space, though, I mean, while you may not need the additional space, the next person who lives in the house may need the space. And I think what you need to do is to do some homework in showing that the loss of the space will not negatively impact parking on the street.
So, we've had parking permits for two cars since the parking permits became available. Nothing is changing. We put one car in the driveway and the other car on the street. So.
Yeah, if I could just explain. Is really a technical variance that this board doesn't have the power to grant in any event, because you eliminate, but whether you use the garage or not, when you build a house, you need a certain number of parking spaces, and they counted the parking spaces in the garage. So, once you get rid of the garage, you don't have enough parking spaces. So, if you explain that stuff to the zoning board, but there's nothing, actually, on that issue, there's nothing the board can do about it. It's just a code issue. This board, the zoning board can, but this board can't, it's a code issue.
Well, I mean, if we just had doors that were the same width when open as a garage door, would that make it a garage?
That's up to the ZBA.
Yeah, it's, I don't want to speak for the ZBA.
Then sue. Say again? Well, we have bicycles, I mean, it's garaging our bicycle.
Well, it's the assumption, then, that the client will need a variance for the parking, but then probably get a grant because of...
Right, we have some assumption, you'll need a variance.
Yeah, you have to go to the ZBA.
So, you're going to have to go to the ZBA for a number of items, that's going to be one of them.
So, we received a survey, I'm going to number five. We received a survey electronically today. It was mailed out on Friday, we never received it, so.
I have, I mean, have.
It's a dated survey from Ward and Carpenter, who took over Riley.
Can you speak into the microphone for the transcript, please?
Sorry, it's, it's, was it dated?
No.
February twenty-sixth, it was done by Ward and Carpenter. We just don't have the stamped copy. And item number six, the consulting landscape, landscaper says it appears there are no trees. The owner should, the applicant should confirm there are no trees. I am confirming there are no trees.
Well, we're not going to grant a resolution this evening, anyway. I mean, you're going to have to go to the ZBA, get approval from the ZBA, and you'll have to come back here one last time, once the ZBA grants variances, in case there are any changes that they make with regard to it. So, what you should do is, there should be a certification on a plan or in writing somewhere that says that there are no trees. I mean, there are two trees, I noticed the photographs, well, there aren't trees on the property itself, but there are trees on the island of grass between the sidewalk and the street.
Correct.
One at either end of your property. You should just make note that, you know, where your lay-down area is going to be, your saw stop, well, I guess you're not going to need saw stop, but you're going to need a lay-down area for where that's going to be, so that we know that it's not going to impact those trees, which are actually village trees, I believe, since they're on, they're in that island of grass there. Okay, so you should make note of that, and then just come back, and by next month, then we should know that the ZBA has either approved it or made changes to it, whatever, and then we'll, you know, we should be okay for a resolution at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
How is the submission made to the zoning board?
You can start our call more.
Okay.
Any other comments, I'm sorry, from the board members? No? Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? Okay, I'm going to take that, that's it.
Thank you.
Next item is two thousand and nineteen dash oh-three, ETA Fargo LLC, ninety-four Lane.
John Malone, Ferguson Malone, Architecture, representing ETA Fargo. So, we've, this is a resubmission, we've made some changes, picking up the comments that we received last time. Of the remaining comments, we have, the first four are related to variance requests that we agree with. I don't know if the board wants to discuss any of those. The fifth item is about a portion of the existing basement that should be counted towards FAR. If you guys have a moment, I just wanted to confirm that we understand what that is, so that the... What we had down in our...
Can you go to the section that we referenced there? G A one point two. Oh, you got it.
Yeah. So, what we had down in our...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry. What we was, the basement was not counted towards FAR, because the basement was below grade relative to the grade. What Doug pointed out is that there's about eighteen inches on this corner of the existing basement that is below the three-foot marker that we missed, so we are going to add about sixty-five square feet of FAR that would...
It's only eighteen inches, that's...
Yeah, we have a spot, we have a spot elevation right at that point, so it's, you know, based on the survey, it's about eighteen inches of stuff, so it's about sixty-five square feet of additional FAR. We have a surplus of about three thousand additional FAR, given the size of the lot, but we'll make that change. That's what you were talking about, Doug, right? The fact that some of it is below.
Yeah.
Sorry, we missed that. We were focused on the, it wouldn't have counted in the proposed, but in the existing condition, you have to, you have to... The other thing that I just wanted to review, Doug, while I had you here, the material behind the retaining wall was a note that was left over from last time. We had thought we had made a change in the site details, where we indicated, we indicated the construction behind the gale of the retaining wall, where we have gravel, and is that what you were looking for, was there something else? Because this wasn't in the initial.
I was going to say, that's what we were looking for.
Right, so this was, this was picked up, and I just wanted to...
Okay, again, is there fabric there?
There's fabric and everything.
I was going to say.
The other comments that we, there's a few civil comments. There's a pipe diameter shown in the cistern that doesn't match on two sheets, which we will pick up. There is a invert elevation on the pipe leading into the cistern that, which is a typo that's incorrect. Then there's a few comments that are left over that are related to the pool design. I think when we were last here, you guys had asked that we give you some direction on what that pool looks like, so we had a few images that I think we sent over, and I didn't know if you guys had any questions.
No, I really don't, I mean, it's nice, it looks like it's a nice pool. I think, from my point of view, I think there are two concerns. One is, I think the comments that our landscape architect raised, that those need to be addressed to make sure that you protect the trees.
Right.
That are, that are to remain. But the biggest comment I have, though, is regarding the coverage and possibly the FAR, just to make sure that the FAR increase then does not exceed what's permitted by right on this property. The other thing is, again, I think I mentioned this to you last time, too, John, I don't view this as a reconstruction, I view this as brand-new construction, because in essence, you're taking this house down to the ground, and all you're doing is using the foundation that's there and expanding it quite a bit, that foundation, and then building up a brand-new house from there. So, I view it as new construction. And since I've been on the board, as chairman of the board, I am not willing to look at variances for new construction, because this village went to a lot of trouble and effort to develop coverage calculations and FAR calculations, because they did not want this whole idea of what's been going on in Westchester for a number of years, tearing down smaller houses and building much larger houses. And I think, again, coming in here, while you may not exceed FAR, you exceed coverage, and I don't think that's appropriate in the requirements for coverage in FARs. And it was only a hundred and eighty-six square feet, I grant that, but you've got to bring it down to a hundred and eighty-six square feet and be under the coverage requirements. In addition, you've got an oversized lot, you've got two lots, so you have even more than one acre, and this is in a one and forty zone, as I recall. So, you have an even larger lot, and to exceed the coverage, I think, is really going over, overboard on what this village wants to see happen.
Okay, so, I mean, I think when we were here last time, the discussion we had about exceeding the coverage, and that small amount had to do with the pool, and how the, a portion of that coverage is related to the regeneration area that's associated with the pool, and we felt, and this was just our, when we, when we discussed it last time, if you remember, we said, the reason that we were proposing that coverage increase was that pool needs, you know, to get a pool of about seven hundred square feet of swimming area, we needed like fourteen hundred square feet of area, and we were, and the reason we would go to the ZBA with this is, act of that regeneration area is, we think, is a positive impact. So, even though it's being counted as coverage, it's actually more like a rain garden doing work for the environment, it looks like natural environment, it doesn't look like patio, it doesn't look like, it looks like pond, and that was the reason we were considering doing that. So, if, you know, if we have to not pursue that, I think, I think we can make a compelling case, it's a small amount, and it's related to, you know, to this, this feature that we think is not like a typical development feature that has, you know, certain negative impacts. That's why we would make that argument. And I know it's a small amount, and we could, you know, squeeze another hundred and fifty out of the pool.
I don't think, you have to squeeze a hundred and eighty-six square feet out of this, because we went through this on a much larger scale on a house on Sunnyside Lane last year sometime, and they were going to do a green roof over this twenty-five hundred square foot addition, and we said, no, that's not, that's not...
No.
We don't want to set the precedent here, I don't want to set the precedent, while I'm chairman, that we are going to permit variances on brand-new construction, because the, the village has set up its requirements, and that's what people should be coming in. You know, it's caveat emptor. These people bought the house knowing that these are the requirements, and this is what they should be meaning.
Okay. So, I mean, I think, just to push back briefly, like, the, you know, the purview of the ZBA would be to make that determination, whether that was appropriate as opposed to this board. I know that you guys are...
I don't know about that, because the premise here is that if this was new construction, that, I mean, you can go to the zoning board regardless.
Right, that's what I'm pointing out.
Right, but what we're doing here, which is different and sort of unique, is you're coming in trying to propose, even advertised as this is an addition and a renovation of something, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but the New York State Code says that anything under fifty percent that you keep, then it's new construction. So, I don't know how you're going to say that this is a renovation, but by state code, it's a new building.
We, we didn't come, we didn't call it an addition as a way to get a pass to the ZBA. We just assumed that whether it was new construction or not, we always have a path to the ZBA. But that, we weren't trying to, we weren't trying to slip anything under some kind of code, and we're just presenting it as what it is, we never tried to...
It's a flyer that you sent out to the neighbors and stuff like that, presented it that way.
But that's, that's what it, you know, this is typically, I mean, we haven't been told in the past that when we, when we modify a house like this, I think we did the...
See, that is the point, that's exactly the point, is that your premise is that you're modifying this house, but in technical terms, you're building a new house.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that definition is in the zoning code, where we could, had it indicated, like, see, we'll be working from the zoning code definition, not from a, I mean, we're not trying to, we're not trying to do anything under the radar.
Keep it on the entire level, so we can point that out.
We're...
It's very, very straightforward, that in order for you to get it, like, forget us, the New York State considers this a new building, so you've got to bring everything up to code. There's nothing, you're not keeping fifty percent.
Yeah, but I'm not sure how the, how the life, the building code or the life safety code relates to the zoning code, is all I'm saying, George.
I think as a professional, it does, because I think what you're trying to do is present this, however you're doing it, as you're keeping half, you know, part of the foundation, but in essence, it's a brand-new building.
It's actually not a brand-new building. One of the reasons we're in front of you for variances is because we're reusing that foundation. We wouldn't be asking for variance for front yard if we weren't reusing, I'm not, but also, but you guys...
The zoning is silent about, because they didn't know, okay? But New York State clearly understands this, California clearly understands this. So, everyone else gets it about what's the difference between new construction and a renovation, and I think you should be just a little bit more clear about that.
Yeah, I just, I just want to point out, we weren't trying to, we weren't, we weren't trying to do anything nefarious by doing it. This is typically how we would approach it, which is how we've done it in the past. It wasn't like we were presenting it some way... It wasn't like we were presenting it some way to indicate that we, you know, needed access to the zoning board of appeals. Our assumption was, you know, if we had built a new house, we could go to the zoning board of appeals.
If you built a new house, you wouldn't be here within a coverage variance.
See, we wouldn't even consider it. And we did the same thing on that house that's being constructed on Broadway right now. They came in looking for variances and we said, no. Bring it down so that you are within the...
No, no, I understand that. And typically, we don't do that. We wouldn't have positioned the house, you know, five feet into the front yard setback if we weren't reusing the foundation. And that's why we're treating it as a renovation. When we originally designed it, we're looking to reuse the first-floor framing and the second-floor framing. So I know, in effect, it is a new building.
It's a new house.
But I'm just not understanding what...
It's not like you're putting an addition onto the existing house. You're tearing that thing down and you're building a brand-new house that looks nothing like it, is twice the size of what's there. And so for that... and you have, again, you have an oversized lot. And to come in here asking for even more, I think, is not appropriate. And again, that's not... as far as I'm concerned. I mean, you wanna go to the Z B A, go ahead. But I can tell you right now, there's gonna be an email from this board to the Z B A saying that we don't approve of this in terms of the overage on coverage.
And again, just to go back to why we had the coverage. We had a discussion about this when we were here last time. And I just wanted to reiterate that really was the only reason we were doing it.
Right. But I made the same comment the last time, but I guess you didn't understand how emphatic I was about it, that you were one hundred eighty-six square feet over and I was not approving that.
Okay. I think I just misunderstood. I think I thought you... we were... that there was some flexibility and you understood that we would be going to the Z B A to ask for that. We can make the reduction. We can find a way to take the reduction out of it. I just... I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just... the only thing I was pushing back on was... No, no. I was pushing back on the implication that we were trying to slip something under the... And that is not what we were trying to do.
I wasn't looking at it like that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, this is not about that. This is about how you're perceiving it and how we're perceiving it. And we perceive it as a new building. And I think...
Right. And I understand that. I just... I think when we...
And we tried to make that point last time.
I think I must have misunderstood it. I don't know. We could look at it... I think what we were understanding is that we were gonna come to you with more pool details and sort of show you what we meant by the regeneration drone. And we were asking for the coverage variance.
I think we even went... if I remember correctly, and I'm sure it's on the little tape thing, is they were talking about how, you know, you really have to show a hardship for this. And there isn't really a hardship other than this is what your desires are. I should also say, I think it's a much better house than what's there, okay? So this is a hard... you know, I'm supportive of what you're doing. I just think that I'm afraid of the guy that came in here that wanted the five thousand extra square feet to say, guess what? You know, you gave it to these guys. It's a precedence thing. And I think that's where the line is. So don't take it any other way than that.
No, no. I just... I think it's a misunderstanding in terms of how emphatic you were about it. So I mean, that's why we were sort of showing you this stuff about the pool. And we try to not make variance requests unless there's a reason for them.
And I can understand the front yard because you're gonna use the existing.
Right.
And it's there. But the coverage, you know... And the three stories, I guess, is not an issue because while it's three stories, you're still underneath the height requirement within the...
And, you know, about forty percent of the building is two stories, right? And sixty percent is three.
So the only thing... The profile or the profile, like you submitted, though, for the house at ninety-four Fargo Lane across the street versus your proposed house, really without any scale on it is kind of difficult to read.
It is... is it scaled?
There is no scale on it. I mean, it doesn't give me a height of the house. That line... that parallel line you see is what I drew to try and get an idea of where... what we're looking at, the roof of your house versus the house at ninety-four Fargo. And you really can't tell. So I'd like to know what is the height of your proposed house and how does that compare to what the height is of the house at ninety-four Fargo?
So also, just so you guys know... Oh, sorry. Just so you guys know, we put this elevation together based on Westchester G I S mapping. We don't have... we have their G I S, which is as accurate as the Westchester G I S topo is. And we have our topo, which is much more accurate. So we matched it up based...
John, take it off.
Yes, there you go. It just makes me uncomfortable to hold it like this.
Motivational.
I don't know. So we matched it up based on the topo line that we have in common that was on the road and go ups. You know, but so we can add that line to... Basically, we've indicated here that the roof of the proposed house is actually five feet higher than the existing ridge of the... ridge of the existing house.
Well, if you can give...
Yeah.
What's the elevation of...
We can also lay the thing on a grid like they do for driveway profiles. And you can... you know, it has parallel lines going across. It indicates where everything is.
Well, if you got the G I S, the county's G I S, then you have an approximation of the elevation...
Of the first floor.
Topography. You have the topography of the house at ninety-four Fargo. And so if you take the height of the house, then you can...
Right, okay.
You can give me an elevation on that house versus the elevation on your house.
I mean, on this item, we have reviewed the visual impact with the neighbor who's affected, which is ninety-four. We've reviewed the design with them. They seem comfortable with what we're showing. And I... you know, we didn't include anything about that in there. But, you know, I think you guys agree that I think the only affected property is ninety-four, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we can update that. We can review coverage. Is there anything you wanna discuss about this pool? Is there any...
Any comments?
Comments? Yeah, interesting.
Could you go to the page that has the front elevation?
Of the house? Not so the pool where...
Looks good.
Do you people in our office would be afraid this morning?
My wife is afraid this morning, too.
Too much like my half together...
Might be alligators, huh?
So you want the elevation of the proposed...
Elevation, yes. It's hard for me to visualize, but this... My perception is a big box on top of a little box. And I wasn't here last January and had a conflict with the... Shoebox, cake box on top of a little box.
A box on top of a box is not an unfair description of what it is. That's what it is. Yeah.
And I looked at all the pictures in the neighborhood and there's nothing remotely resembles such a box on a box.
Renato's house that we did, that's further up Fargo, is similar to that. It's a box on top of a box.
Well, it wasn't in the picture book presentation.
So, no, I mean...
But a big box on a little box.
We understand, I mean, the direction on the house is that we're doing a... So in the visual impact... Just in terms of aesthetically, what it looks like?
Yeah.
I mean... It's a... no, I mean, I know it's a more challenging house. It's atypical, right? There is not other modern houses like that in the lot. I think... we think that it would be a good house. You know, part of what we've done here, part of why this facade is a little bit severe and very boxy, is what we're trying to do in terms of the energy use on the house. So we had looked at that facade.
I have a picture of the rendering. I don't know if you wanna...
Oh, yeah. I mean, you have the rendering, right? I don't know.
Did you see this series? Here, John. It's a series of photo links showing...
Yeah, that's a series of photos of you and the house from the street to give you a sense of what it'll look like.
One more time.
To get a... What's that like?
It's hard to carry that.
Yeah, I know.
It's easy.
See, I'm a gentleman. I'm not a front man. I don't like it.
I have no issue with this. I have no issue with one hundred and sixty.
Yeah, I understand that now. So but I think, you know, part of what I just... what I was trying to get at is, you know, we looked at this with... George may appreciate this, is that we looked at it with a few window openings in it. We didn't really have the area. There's no reason to have those windows. But what part of what... For glass, where they have a real use, not where they're not...
You're still going for the passive certified?
Yeah.
John, Caesar may not know, since he wasn't at the meeting, he doesn't understand...
What the passive house, okay.
Yeah, what's energy-wise, what you're doing there.
So this house is gonna be based on...
No, 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 no.
No, it's a system that... It's a European, it started in Germany. It's really... the theory behind it is really a super insulated house. So there's a lot of discussions about photovoltaics and other ways that you save energy by making energy. But it turns out really the best way to save energy is to just not waste it and have the shell be very, very insulated. So this, like, the walls of the existing building that we're proposing are gonna be about sixteen inches thick with all insulation. So you're gonna have insulation values that are probably double or triple of what they are in a additional house. So what ends up happening is the house will be so well sealed in terms of air and thermally that it'll be able to be heated with like a hairdryer as opposed to, you know, all this stuff. So part of what you need to do to get to the level of the passive house is you have to limit the amount of glazing because there's so much loss in the glazing. The glazing is gonna be triple glazed instead of double glazed. And you saw the design of the house has like a lot of these views to the rear yard. So all of the glass budget is being used up facing west and south. And that was part of what is driving the design. It's a little bit different than if you could just put glass wherever you wanted.
We want the sun to come in in the winter, not in the summer. So it's all kinda designed around.
Right.
This is the... It just... this looks so stark. Looks so stark. Looks like a maintaining wall.
But I mean, I think from the materiality of it, I think we're gonna try to make it soft and fit into the environment a little bit more than if it were, you know, a stark white box. You know, it's... we're gonna work on it in terms of...
We had the same issue on Broadway with the big white box.
Yeah. Are you using earth tones on the house? It looks like from the render...
That's where we are. That's where we are right now. We're gonna try to, you know... I don't think that the goal is to make it... I mean, the strong statement is the geometry of it. And you see like the way that it would fit into the wood and the...
It's not gonna be a flat floor. The rendering seems to have... it look like plank.
Yes. Right. It's gonna be some kind of wood finish. I mean, if we could afford... it depends a little bit on budget if we could afford... I don't know if you've seen grain screens where there's actually space between the board, which gives it much more of a textured look. Again, some of this is gonna be driven by budget. We're spending a lot on insulation. So let's see this.
Just an aside, a house that's so insulated, doesn't that create problems of dryness inside?
Air quality.
Yeah.
He's on it. So you have to actually exchange air or you'd run out of oxygen. It's that kind of place. Yes.
I mean, I heard it eight-inch insulated walls, but sixteen...
Yeah. No, so Susie Frommer was just... it was sort of a modern, well-sealed, spray-from house. This is... takes it to a much different level.
You have a light vent over... you have natural ventilation or you have mechanical?
Yeah, we have a natural light vent.
Mechanically ventilated.
Yeah. You have to... yeah, you gotta vent it.
How about saying, but you don't meet the... They go for natural ventilation or what?
I think we'll be all right there. Yes. Because, you know, the state...
You have a long talk.
You know, the state... The state indicates that if you don't have the natural ventilation for the window, you have to mechanically. So we're gonna have the amount. Evan is a mechanical engineer.
That's about it. We're gonna have a long conversation about fire stops.
What's gonna eventually happen is that houses like this are going to be given incentives by villages like this to do that. And that is when things like coverage and whatever else will magically be, you know, addressed. Until that happens, you know, you're just ahead of the curve, so to speak, in a positive way. We're going there.
One of the things that Evan asked me to mention is that part of the reason the footprint of the house is larger is it's about eighteen inches larger all the way around because of the walls. So that adds up to much more than one hundred eighty... Much more. It's four hundred square feet of insulation going on.
But as all these things go, just like lead went, now energy star is much more prevalent because one figures out that sometimes, especially with lead, there was a self-imposed kind of little voice system of how things worked.
Right, right.
And the passive is great, but there's also... There's lots of clues you can find out about doing it that you don't then have to get certified.
Right, right. Whether the certification is worth that, yeah, right. So there was just one other thing, if there aren't anything else. Susan Noone's comments, and I spoke to her today and we spoke to her arborist. So the second comment that she has... Oh, and before I get into that, Whelan's permit... Right, is that what we're indicating by this? I just wanted to confirm that there's nothing else to do on Whelan's. So on the... She had pointed out that one of the trees that we indicated to remain is a thirty-six-inch caliper tree and that it requires a critical root zone protection that affects our grading. So we talked about that today. The way critical root zone is written in the zoning code, it indicates that you need to draw a circle around the tree based on the caliber of the tree that is one-point-five times the size of the tree. So the way the code is actually written, the circle around our tree is supposed to be fifty-four inches, which is relatively small radius circle. The way it should be interpreted is that it's fifty-four feet. So, you know, if we were being sticklers about the code, we would say, okay, this is indicating that the critical root zone is fifty-four inches. But, you know, the way that Suzanne is interpreting that it should multiply that by twelve and it should be fifty-four feet. Rather than get into a discussion of, you know, whether we should follow the exact word of the code or whether we should do the fifty-four inches. And I can show you this on it. It's just... it's missing a multiplier in the definition for the critical root zone.
Can you go to the site plan and just show us which tree you're talking about? This is what the tree number is, sixty, thirty-six inch, quite high.
Right. It's this tree here, number sixty. So a fifty-four inch... A fifty-four inch circle... A fifty-four-foot circle like that comes out into this area. We're doing some grading in this area. What we typically do is try to keep our grading out of the drip line of the tree. I spoke to Suzanne today about it. She believes that that definition that's in the tree code is excessive and what it should really be indicating is that the critical root zone is the drip line of the tree. And the area beyond the remainder of that zone should be considered a protection area, a root protection area. It's not critical, but it's a root protection area. So in our discussion today, I said we would change all of our grading associated that was shown in the drip line, pull that all out. And then in the critical root zone area, we would try to limit the amount of grading. So the issue was is that we were raising the grade. So if you raise the grade on the roots, you could potentially smother them. So we talked to Greg Gutter, our arborist. So we talked to Greg Gutter, our arborist. His opinion was if you're raising it six inches, there's no issue. There wouldn't be any issue. He considers that negligible. Once you go higher than six inches, there's a treatment that he recommends, so when the new topsoil gets laid, there's a type of aeration just to confirm that the roots can handle it. So in any, what I talked to Suzanne about is what we would do is change the grading, make sure we're outside of the drip edge. Anyplace where we are filling in what was considered that larger critical root zone, we would indicate a note that if it exceeds six inches of grade, that it would have to have this treatment that the arborist would tell us what it is.
Okay. Why don't you have the arborist, I want to have the arborist put something in writing?
Yeah, that, that's what we'll do. That's what we'll do. And then we'll review it with Suzanne. I just wanted to make sure if anybody had any questions here because that was the only note on there that we were having trouble with.
Any other comments from any of the board members?
One of my notes is construction access and I can't remember why I wrote it. I was looking at that, if there may be trees in, in the way for getting construction access to the back?
There's, uh, there's a civil on the floor.
Yeah, right there, right there.
See. So the... The construction access is here, Caesar, around this way.
Yeah, but go to the tree plan. It's already the trees in the way of what you just ran your finger on.
No, so we have tree protection here and we have, you know, Suzanne, Suzanne's looked at the construction access.
Yeah, I think one of her comments was on the, on that, um, what would be the, the south side of the property extending the, um, the protect, the tree protection.
The root protection, yeah. Root protection here and the root protection there.
Yeah, getting closer to where the existing driveway is so that it's, those trees are protected if they're going to be driven.
Right. She wants us, right now we were showing, it's not on this plan, it's on our tree protection plan, but we're showing root protection, which is mulch and plywood, uh, in this area here. She wants us to extend that from the, there to the new retaining wall and then also connect to the root protection areas that we showed back here. So we're going to...
Any other comments? Any questions? Any comments from anyone in the audience regarding this matter? Okay, I think if you make those changes, then come back and then grab that, then I think you'd be...
Okay, go to the CBA.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks. Uh, the next slide is 2018-18, Andrew Cortez, 40 Roof View Road.
My name is Alba from Hudson Engineering. 40 Roof View Road. If you remember, the original scope of the project involved making changes to the house with a pool and a patio in the rear yard. Through our discussions with the planning board and, you know, reducing the disturbance of steep slope in the rear yard, we've cut it down to a proposed addition to the front of the house, proposed essentially extension to the back of the house, a wood deck on piers, and then a retaining wall for the stormwater system needed for the difference in impervious area. We're looking for the feedback of the planning board as to this layout. Pool's gone.
We got the pool, but how much have you cut back on the actual disturbance in the backyard?
Uh, I believe it was mentioned in the cover letter, but I believe we cut it down by another thousand or so. It's down to...
Let me just see if I can find it here.
The elusive disturbance?
The elusive disturbance had been reduced further to 11,577 square feet compared to 12,888 square feet.
From the last, yeah.
Right, so you reduced it about 11, 1300 square feet.
Yeah, and again, some of those disturbances are not really disturbances in that we're not regrading or anything. It's just a matter of access or stockpile here, tree protection, and then access on this side. So you've got this lever here that's not really being touched, same with this area here, and a lot of the front yard, if you will.
Any comments from any of the board members?
I think I didn't notice, you didn't do any site sections, no?
No, we didn't have any. But again, the limit of the wall now is five feet at this corner at most, but typically four feet or lower, going from five feet down to one on this side, and along this side it's four feet. But this is not visible.
Right, but the cut fill is how much?
I don't have calculation for it. With the cut fill, again, it's limited to getting enough cover over the coltex system and maintaining the separation for the, from the retaining wall to the coltex. Because typically for stormwater systems, you can't have greater than 15% slopes over the top of the system.
What's the, what's the distance between the wall, I'm sorry, I didn't skip, the proposed wall and the coltex system?
10 feet.
10 feet?
On the dot. And then it's about 10 feet from the edge of the coltex to the deck because there are spirits for the decks.
Well, it actually looks like it's farther. I mean, if you're 10 feet from the coltex to the deck, then it looks like you're about 20, at least 20 feet from it.
The piers are set in, I mean, the piers are set in, the structure of the deck is set onto the deck. So he's pushed as far forward as he can to the building.
Okay. I mean, it's better, it's not ideal, I mean, because still, George and Caesar raised the issue about how much, how much cut and fill are you, are you bringing in here? Still, I think we...
Come on.
Yeah. You still... The rocks area, yeah.
Well, there's access from this side, we're just taking the trucks.
It's not, I assume the deck is raised with columns.
Yes.
So the reason why the, um, the coltex wouldn't be moved under the deck?
Coltex, the structural response, structural and drainage both have to, have to be 10 feet away and that's what he's got. Can't be, can't be any closer.
Any closer to what? To the building?
Can't be any closer to the building. I mean, he can eliminate the wall and fill the rest of the yard if you don't have a wall, but then you disturb a more area.
Any other comments? No. So how do you progress with this? George, Caesar, Hillary, Sheila?
Yeah.
The five person board here.
I just, you know, yeah, I think it's better than what you had before. It's not like ideal, but again, what happens to this kind of stuff, it's best to kind of present it to the board in ways that are meaningful to the board too, not just for my building department type background. So coming in here not, not explaining how much cut and fill, you know, I just remember the last pool we dealt with and, or one of the pools we dealt with, no one really understood until all of a sudden some site sections happened and then all of a sudden it's like, wow. So that's the kind of descriptive things that would have been helpful.
Of course, but I mean, the counter argument is for the coltex, that's, I mean, we have to, we're required to?
I get exactly what you're saying. I just think that your point would be even clearer that you would come in here with a site section that kind of helped describe. That's true. Profile too.
I think we want to see that, if you, even if you progress with this, we want to see those, those cross sections too.
Okay.
But again, and what's, what's the issue with the retaining wall versus the distance to the coltex units? Is there an issue as to how far the wall has to be from the coltex?
You need 10 feet from the coltex for drainage and its work. And you can't put a wall near the drainage either. So the general rule is 10 feet for the, any structure, a wall is a structure.
Okay. So is this wall only 10 feet from the, the coltex or is it moved?
It's just 10.
It's just 10 feet, okay.
Where, where's the bottom of the coltex versus the bottom of the wall?
The bottom of the coltex here is 447.5. The bottom of the wall on this side is 441, 442.
So the bottom of the coltex is, is higher than the bottom of the wall?
Yes, which is why you maintain the 10 feet because you don't want the water pressure.
You, you don't think the water would just bleed out of the wall?
He's the engineer.
So required to maintain the 10-foot separation?
That's, that's one of the reasons for the 10-foot separation.
But it's, it's not even natural soil, it's going to be filled.
Not under, not under the coltex.
Well, from the coltex out to the retaining wall.
You, the hill's on a slope, the wall, the bottom of the wall, the foot of the wall, the foot of the wall is going to be much deeper.
Yeah, I got it, okay. I had it reversed, sorry. Yes, same to you.
Just like I said, I have to run, but the house, in case you're interested in looking at them, that's really just the size of the extensions quite a bit.
Does the house show a site section or is it just, just the house?
Just the house.
Yeah, I think just for me, is next time you come in with another project, again, we went through this before, I think with the same application, is that it's best for it to be a comprehensive application and person that's presenting it so that we don't have to ask those kinds of questions, all right? Because it is kind of important to know what we're dealing with. And so having someone who is just doing the house and then someone just doing the engineering, I'm sure you're coordinating and, and all that stuff, it would just be helpful if there was a set of documents that help describe exactly what you're doing from our perspective.
I think tonight we just really wanted to know your inputs. Christine, speak, say it again.
I'm Christine Griffin, the architect. We just wanted some input from you because we've taken a generally different direction and, you know, we want to get some outdoor space for this house, which is now why we have a deck, we don't have a pool. And we will get all the information that we need, these sections through the site, but just want to know if you're, if you could give us some comments about what we presented.
As I recall, the original floor plans of the house did not include this bump out in the kitchen where the deck, the surrounding, where the deck's surrounded.
Just to look for the original plan proposed construction on the house, as in raising another floor, we're no longer doing that, simply just an addition at the first floor level.
Okay, well, you're putting this bump out on it, so what is the width of that deck?
The deck's about, I believe, 20 by 40, approximately.
20 feet by 40. So what if you reduce the size of the deck?
How much reduction are we talking?
It sits so high up in the back.
Because again, it's on first floor elevation, it's about 12 feet higher than the grade below.
Well, my point is if you reduce the width of the deck, then you could move the coltex closer to that, to the deck, because the deck is now shorter, and then you could move the wall in so that there's less impact in the rear yard and there'd be less fill, less environmental impact, that's my...
How much of a reduction are we talking here as far as?
That's why a site section would be very helpful.
You said 20 by 40, which?
Uh, 20 feet, 20 is the one of concern, not 40.
Yeah, the 20 is 20 width, so, yeah.
What if you say 15?
It's only 12 this year, 20 pulled out.
Well, it's, it's 20 from the main house, not the bump out, right? All right, so...
It's 20 by 36.
39 now.
And this is the only outdoor space.
Christine, we need to speak as well.
This is the only outdoor space because it's, because of the steep grade?
Well, it's not, no, because you're, you're creating a wall back here so you're going to have a flat area over the coltex units too. So plus you have stairs coming down to this first wall and then you'll be able to walk around the first wall.
The area for the coltex, that was actually closer to one on two after the coltex. And the area of the coltex themselves, about 15%, so it's not really flat in that area.
Well, I'm, I'm going to go from 452...
You might see the... 450 over here to maintain a 15% and then this is essentially one on two down.
So what do you got?
One on two is more.
So you might find actually that, that what you're proposing has very little impact difference between what is being considered. Like, you might be able to show, again, I hit a, through a section, that the impact isn't that much different between what you're proposing and what is being, you know, being considered or being suggested.
Okay.
So give us a section that shows the section through and comparing what we're requesting and what you're proposing and let's see what it looks like.
I guess with regard to the deck, is there any number you'd want the deck reduced only because between the window and the, does that...
You, you come up with a number that's reasonable, you know, as to what's usable, but, but also what it's going to be something, something meaningful in terms of difference. Two or three feet isn't going to make much of a difference, but, you know, if you're 20, 20, what were you saying, Caesar, 15 feet so?
Yeah, but then it's from the bump out, it's...
Probably pushing 10 feet.
What's the distance that you under the deck have from the bump out?
From the bump out, I think she said close to 13.
So if you take five feet off it, so...
Now, what happens if the bump out changes its configuration too?
Let's imagine there's a breakfast area inside the house.
We also could, can lever the deck over the supports, so we'll do some...
You've got all the cantilever on it now.
Well...
Do you know how much they're proposing?
They've got, they've got a pocket cantilever, like a cantilever.
You're showing that?
So if you cut the deck five feet and then cantilever that back five feet, so then you're gaining 10 feet. So that's something that might be doable then.
Again, to some extent, there's only so much we can move the cantilever back, the columns back.
Okay.
The cantilever, but the cantilever is actually based on how, how much the beams go in. So you're sure of the deck and you're, the beam's still going to stay out.
Okay.
No, the beam's only coming in one-third the distance you're cutting off the deck. Does it have that two-thirds for, for one-third?
Two-thirds.
If you come, if you come in three feet, the beam only comes in one foot. So the coltex only moves one foot.
So it's not a lot.
And there's no, that's a lot of math for this later.
Do yourself a favor, okay? Come in and present and, and you probably make your case that what you're proposing is the most logical, but you gotta...
Show us the alternative that it doesn't work.
Got you.
Okay, so say, what did you say, go the 50, excuse me, throw the 15 feet? Try that?
Hi, Andrew Cortez, the applicant. So it helps if we bring a cut and fill analysis so you can see how much fill we have in the backyard, that's what you're saying?
Well, that certainly helps too, but then also the idea of just, if you shorten the deck, what does that do? Does it, does it reduce the amount of disturbance in the backyard? I mean, that, that's what we're trying to get at.
So the concern is, is the hill like this and everyone's trying to figure out how to least disturb this hill, okay? And how to do that. Unfortunately, there's no drawing that shows that. And so here, all this, I think everyone's trying to figure out is, are they doing the most that they can that still lets them have a house and whatever? You know, are, are there other alternatives that can do both? You've already made, you are down here like this and you've gone like this, but there's still questions about, is this the most appropriate thing for both you and for the building?
I understand. So we can do a cut and fill analysis on what's here and what was proposed prior. Does that help that also?
No, no. What was before is not worth, yeah.
I was just wondering.
Yeah, yeah. This is about what you have, what you have right now and trying to kind of prove your point of like, that this is the, the most, this is the sweet spot. And, but be prepared, the people here have different eyes that are not so convinced. So you have to either, like, as we said, sell it or come up with a, something like that's what's being suggested here.
I just want to bring up a point that we, we reduced like eight feet on this side of the house. We cut off almost 10 feet of the back of the house, so we shrunk it from the original footprint. So I think, you know, all these spaces that we have, that we bumped out the back and the front or, or the minimum that we can try to achieve this floor plan.
Well, that's positive, but so again, if we can see what George is saying, if we can see what it looks like in terms of what's the impact in the rear yard by, by shorting that deck. If it, if it isn't worthwhile, then, you know, maybe the 20 feet is to lighten up. Okay? But I think we're getting closer, yes.
I also suggest that you, you submit a letter and in the narrative, explain what you did. For instance, this letter didn't even say we eliminated the pool. It would be very helpful to have a letter explaining the changes over the last time. And, and I, I think it helps your position as well. Because just now, this, I, I don't know that we understood, that everybody understood that you had taken, taken part of the house off and stuff.
You weren't looking at that, I was really looking at the backyard.
So if you, if you put a letter that explains, you know, a cover letter, generally when somebody puts in a new application, they say we changed it in these ways and it would be helpful.
Okay. Great. Okay? Thank you. All right. Thanks. So try that out, the comparison of 15-foot deck versus the 20-foot and what that does, you know, the difference with cross sections in the analysis, you know, your, your cut and fill analysis on both, okay? Right? Have a good night. Next slide is 2018-06, 95 Roof View Road.
Can you speak to the board, please? Good evening, members of the board, Elliot Senor, engineer for the project in 95 Roof View. I was here last month and you asked for, you made some comments about the patio and the, and the relative position to the trees. And so taking that in mind, what we did was we, there's a sliding door off of the, off of the house here. And so we're just going out to a six-foot landing and then going down some stairs to a patio. So we lifted, shifted the patio all the way to the, to the right and, and put the six-foot and then widened it out, being well away from the trees. Moving the patio over, there's a roof covered porch here that originally had stairs coming down to the side with a platform. And so we took those stairs coming down to that same patio so they don't go out the side, they go out the back. And that also helped us reduce the coverage because one of the other comments was trying to reduce coverage, overall coverage. And to that end also, what we did was we had a, a front walkway here, all right? And, and so what we did was we had this porch, wraparound porch here, porch across the the front. And so, what we did was, we put some steps right at the end of the porch to go right down to the driveway, so we eliminated that walkway. We have a, the architectural plans here.
Yeah, if you could just explain it a little bit better towards the front, because I think that was one of the comments, our engineer had made, so up there, there wasn't access to the front door of the house, right?
Yeah. So, this is the, the revised architectural plan. So, the door to the house is here, and this is a whole roof porch.
Okay.
So, what we did was, instead of coming out here with a walkway and then another walkway around, we just put our four steps at the end of the, end of the porch. So, we don't have to count coverage twice.
Okay.
Go on, I have the, the front elevation of the house as well. So, it's just gonna be, it's just gonna be the railing and the post holding the, holding the roof up. And then, right here is the stairs coming down to the, to the driveway.
What's the height, what's the height of the, of the wall? What's the height of the wall when you look at it, because it's, it's on the road, right? So, it's River View going up, and what's the height of it?
The elevation doesn't match that floor plan, though. The elevation's shown around going all the way through, you're showing the step.
The steps, there's, there's a...
Not in the front. Your front elevation shows no step.
Right.
But your elevation, your floor plan shows a step.
The front elevates, so...
Okay, if you're just, so next question, your front elevation doesn't match your floor.
So, right here is supposed to be a couple of stairs coming down from the...
No, 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 in the front of the building.
The front of the...
Right there, you show railing.
Yes.
Go to the floor plan. Show steps.
No, it shows, well, it doesn't show the steps.
Well, it doesn't show the railing.
It doesn't show the, it doesn't show the railing, as far as there. All right. I got it.
How is that considered, a big step or a short step?
It's gonna be a railing.
It's a small step.
Then there's a, one or two other comments that we received from, from Han Engineering. We, we lowered the Coltech systems so that we're not above the... It basically just lowered the Coltech, oh, it's on the other plan, the whole system down a little bit, so that we were lower than the top than the trench drain on the driveway, and that, so that we wouldn't be outflowing over the driveway, and we'll have the full capacity. So, there was a comment about the silt fence, we didn't quite understand what the comment was. The property is relatively flat, I think there's two or three percent across the property. We just put the silt fence around the whole property.
Well, it doesn't make sense, because on one plan, the silt fence is running parallel to Irving Place all the way down, and then around the corner to River View Road. That silt fence is running through your chain-link fence that you're proposing to protect the trees around the side there. And, again, because while you say it's relatively flat, I mean, the property does slope down towards the River View, Road, Irving Place intersection, and your silt fence really, when it's running down the side of a hill, it's not doing anything. It's not accomplishing what it's...
Well, right, I mean, there's...
And if you wanna draw, if you wanna draw it on there for you where the silt fence should be, it's not that way. Here, you can take my copy, and this is what the silt fence should be on the site.
Can you show us?
No, yeah. This village is getting a lot of free work out of it. I shouldn't have resigned, I should have stayed. The red lines are where the silt fences should be, all right? If you're flowing this way, you should break it here, break it around the planting that you want to put on the corner. The silt fence was shown going through the plantings, which made no sense. Again, and this silt fence should pick up here, pick up any work that you're doing this front door, because you're doing so, it would be great. And then, the other silt fence, and this side should be down here at the bottom, so that you pick up anything that's long down there. That's pretty perfect.
All right, thank you.
That's...
I think, too, was the engineer record, you put the date on it, and it seems like, makes it seem like McGarvey's...
Right, well, we, so...
When you stamp it, it's really gonna be usurped.
Right, so, basically, we, you know, are taking care of that.
We need a stamp anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, would be here stamped.
It's stamped, yeah.
What you're saying is, well, his name should be taken off there.
Yeah, basically, these guys show his, his name off of it. All right. So, then, there was the coverage issue. So, so by doing those couple of items that we did, we reduced the cover a little bit. And as far as comparison, I know that this board's not dealing with coverage issues in that zoning board, but I know that you'll want, you're interested in it.
Well, we're not, but we are, okay? The ZBA looks to us to give them a completed site plan, and we look at some of the issues that the ZBA will be looking at.
So, so we revised our coverage chart and our coverage numbers after we've removed portion, small portion of our coverage. It wasn't a tremendous amount, it's what we can do. Our, our coverage, our over-coverage is 31.8 percent. We looked at the three houses around us that we can get off of public records, and seven Irving Place is 40 percent over-coverage. Nine Irving Place is 28 percent over-coverage. And that 24 River View is 40 percent over-coverage. So, we're at the low end of the three surrounding properties that are over-coverage.
My comment on that is, the three houses that you're pointing out that are all over on-coverage were all constructed prior to 2003. In 2003, I believe, is when the Board of Trustees adopted the latest FAR requirements and coverage requirements. So, those houses all predated. I mean, you know, you did do a good job, and you were, the architect did a good job in reducing the FAR. You came in originally over FAR, we told you, "That's not gonna fly," and, and you brought the FAR in under the permitted. You're way over on-coverage, and, as I said, you, this coverage that you're coming in at is, is after the Board of Trustees adopted its regulations on coverage and FAR. I mean, I'll give it up to the board, I mean, if you, if, I think you still have to do some work here to come back with a plan that, that addresses all the comments we made, and then you go on to the ZBA. But if you wanna take a chance, go on to the ZBA with 31 percent over, I'm, I will remain quiet on that issue.
As long as other things are gonna be revised, revised the coverage. Simple.
Well, right, I mean, there's not much, there's not much more that we can do as far as coverage for, we don't have a lot of accessory areas.
I know, there isn't a lot you can do, but...
You know, all's we have is a little patio in the back, that's, you know, a twelve-by-
A little bit helps.
-twelve patio.
A little bit helps you.
And that's why we moved the items that we did and switched things around to, to try and accommodate, you know, your, your thoughts.
You know, in Mr. Han's memo to you, paragraph two says, "The allowable existing of proposed coverage values are 2,282," that's the allowable, 2,681 is the existing, and you're asking for 3,009 square feet, which is about four, it's like 400 square feet, almost 400 square feet over what's existing, and it's 800, almost 800 square feet over what's allowed. So, that, that gets you up to almost 32 percent over. I mean, you know, that's a simple, I don't, the ZBA may not be amenable to a, a coverage factor like that.
I think that, I think this board owes it to the, at least to the zoning board, to offer an opinion about what this is, you know, from a planning perspective, not just from an analytical perspective. So, you know, part of this is that you came in with something that was no, and you made some fairly smart moves, but they were minor, but then, at the end of the day, you're still pretty over. And you're sort of putting your hands up, like, "That's the best we can do." And so, the board's saying, especially what, what Pat's trying to say, is that, "Well, the whole reason for these changes was so that stuff like this would happen," right? That was the whole premise, and, and saying, "Well, Johnny, who was over here, is this and that." Yeah, Johnny came in today, he wouldn't get it. So, do you know what I mean? So, it's a, the argument's sort of a hollow, in a way, so...
Well, we're starting off with a, with a house that was over, you know, that was built before, that was over to begin with, and are trying to...
So, Johnny over there, who's over 48 percent, comes in tomorrow and says, "Oh, well, you know, you gave this guy this, so I should get that." So, it just multiplies. And so, that's where I go, you know, "What are we doing?" And, so, part of this is also, you're not given great reason why this is really a hardship or a need as well. And I haven't gotten it, so, other than, "I just want a bigger house," and I get that, too.
I think if you go to the zoning ordinance, there are five criteria that are laid out in there. The reasons for granting a variance, or the, or the criteria that the ZBA will be looking at and determining whether the ZBA, whether the variance is appropriate. And I think, and what George and the other members are saying, too, is that it's things that we've looked at, too. And, again, the hardship, there isn't a hardship here, it's created by the owner, because he wants to build a bigger house. There is a house that's existing there, somebody could buy that house and move into it tomorrow. You know, you...
Right, so, any one of the criteria isn't, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, and don't pretend to be on TV.
Same here.
Thank God.
But, any, as far as, any one criteria, it doesn't, doesn't necessarily throw the, you know, any self-inflicted, you know, it doesn't throw out the rest of the arguments.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, but I think if you read the language in there, you know, originally, variances start out as hardships, and then New York State decided to change that and expand it a bit, and bring in these other criteria in terms of the impact in the neighborhood, environmental issues, and hardship is still in there, but it says it shouldn't, it isn't necessarily the only factor or the prime factor in this, but I think it, it still can outweigh the other factors, though. And when somebody doesn't have hardship, it makes it more difficult for boards, like, "Well, why should we do this?" I mean, again, I keep going back to this, I mean, this village went to great lengths to establish coverage and FAR, and to constantly, for the village to constantly be getting, granting variances on those two factors, says, "Why did we go through this process?" And, oh, again, aren't we trying to preserve the character of this village, and if we just keep building bigger and bigger houses, this is a substandard lot, too. This lot's only 4,000 square feet.
I mean, that's, that's the reason why, I think that's the big reason why it's over-coverage, is because it's a substandard lot, but the lot exists, we can't change the lot.
Understood, but it also doesn't mean that you can't work within those, those criteria, either. I mean, you're gonna come in, there's 2,681 square feet is existing, you could've stayed within that coverage factor, too, without building the house out wider than, or longer than it is now. And you would, you wouldn't...
I mean, as far as I know, and I didn't do the plan, but as far as I, as far as I know, it, it's just changing, you know, the garage to a two-car garage and building above it. It's not a huge addition, most, most houses nowadays are two-car garages, and that's the, and that's the only addition to the footprint of the house, was to add a second garage, and then, of course, the space above it, but basically, add a second car garage.
I think you're, aren't you going out, I thought it was going out in some degree.
Could I get a couple of numbers?
Just the garage, yeah.
I think you said the existing coverage was what?
The existing coverage is 2,681.
And what's the new coverage?
3,000.
3,000. So, that's what I said, it's almost, it's about 300 and something odd square feet, 320 square feet more than the existing. So, it should be more than a car, right?
No, a car's 200 square feet, garage is 12 by 20. I mean, now, we have that little porch behind, now, but that's more aesthetics than anything, you know? We can get rid of the porch, but...
32 percent over-permitted, and it's 12.2 percent over-existing coverage. I don't know, what, what does the board feel on this?
Well, we, I forget the exact number, but we were very concerned, about 158 feet.
Yeah, 186 square feet.
186. This is 300 and something odd.
That was on 186 on a two-acre lot, this is on a 14,000-square-foot lot.
More of the impact. Right, which... No, but the difference is, for me, the difference is, that was a new, a new construction. So, here becomes the impact, and let the zoning board sort of figure it out from an analytical standpoint, but this is much more of a, from a planning perspective, you know, is this going to be that impactful on that site? And, boy, I don't, I can't say from the information you're giving us, nor, I confess, I haven't been out there, so I can't tell you. But I will relay a story that we have a dog, and my wife walks our dog, we both walk her dog, and in my neighborhood, there was a property that was approved by this board, and she walks the dog and says, "My God, have you seen this large thing that they just built? You know, it looks like a big boat in the backyard." And so...
Put your head down.
I want, well, usually, the planning board, all right, that, of this. So, that's the kind of things that, you know, the others are seeing and complaining about.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, we're...
I'm not saying that you're doing that, I'm just telling you that in my head, I'm like a dome, you know? I don't want her yelling at me.
It's not, it's not that this house isn't in keeping with the neighborhood, it is, it's just that you have a lot that's on a corner lot that you, it sits high, and this house is big, you know, for that, it's big, so, I mean, and it's...
It also sits closer to the street than most of the houses in the area.
How does it, how does it compare with the two other houses that sit next to it on Irving Place?
In terms of dimensioning from the street?
I think you have an aerial photo, you have an aerial photo in this package.
I mean, it doesn't look like it's, it's certainly, you know, closer than, than this house. It doesn't look like it's any, any closer than the house one away.
We haven't moved it further, closer to the street.
We haven't moved it closer to the street. And these other ha, this house seems to be the same, you know, as close, you know, we're not having a scale or survey, I, I can't tell, but, but just when we look at it, it's in line with the other house here, and this house seems to be about the same length of the street, and this garage seems to be, you know, maybe that's a little farther back, but this one seems to be the same length of the street. So, again, the setback is in keeping with the, looks like it's in keeping with the neighborhood.
Right, I think it's, it's the location, because you come to, you come to an intersection, there's a stop sign right there, and you're driving up River View Road, you're going east on River View, you're driving up a hill, and when you get to that stop sign, you're looking right at that house. The houses on the, will be the south side of River View are all set back farther from the road, and the house directly across from the subject house on Irving Place, while it's almost as close, it's the side yard that's facing River View Road, and it's also heavily landscaped at this point.
One Irving? The other side?
Yes, one Irving Place. So, again, this is a one-story houses exist now, so it's not so obvious.
But it does just, I mean, the driveway or the garage, if it helps, is three feet lower than the main floor, we tried to keep that new addition down a little bit.
I think you're creating a two-story house out of this now, I think.
Well, it's different.
I give you the one pluses, though, that it appeared that the portion of the house that was closest to Irving Place, you were not going to put the second floor over that portion of the house. So, the two-story is set back a little bit farther from the road, I guess. I think there's a family room that's proposed on, you know, be the west side of the house.
Yeah.
If I read the plans correctly, and the elevations correct, look like there's only a one-story.
Yeah, so, the, so the, for right, left is not two-story. And, and, and this, this wing is three feet lower than the, the right side is three feet lower than the garage area, is three feet lower than the main house, to try and keep the whole bulk down.
It's not gonna make a difference if you take off the garage.
No, because that's, because that's not where, not where the masses, right?
It's tricky. What about mitigating, what about landscaping the front?
Our landscape architect was here, but he...
What about mitigating, what about landscaping the front?
Our landscape architect was here, but he had a, another meeting that he had to go to.
We want to make people do that, and I think Suzanne Nolan's comments were to put more landscaping in, particularly at the corner of Irving Place and.
Which we did.
River View to mitigate the impact of the houses you drive up. And there are also several trees that have been proposed along Irving Place.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, after the comments from your landscape people, we, he went back and added a lot of new plantings to it. I don't think we had any new comments from the landscaping.
No, I think she, um.
So, the existing house is one-story, right?
One-story, one-story. Anyway, but we did follow her comments and the submission. We did add a whole lot of plantings on, along Irving Place. Did a lot more plantings around the front of the house and some additional sort of street trees on the right side of the driveway.
There you go.
But they'll take a while till they.
She also said here. The following changes to the planting plan should be made as a condition of approval. The size of the green giant arboretum should be increased to eight feet in height. And their location switched with the blue point, uh, blue point junipers. The choke cherry tree should be located along Irving Place between the two groupings of evergreens and given space to prevent shading of the evergreens.
All right, we didn't see, what's the page on that?
Here's the comments, Doug usually attaches them to his memo, but.
Say we didn't see, we didn't get them.
Yeah, there weren't any on this one.
You would've got. So, basically, the premise though is that as a right, you can build a two-story house less than a hundred square feet than what you're proposing.
Well, much less than, so if you were to go.
The coverage, you know, three hundred.
Right, so the three hundred square feet is, would be the garage, you know, plus, no.
That's from existing.
But our existing is already over.
Yeah, the existing.
I see, so, but this is a new, new construction. Eight hundred square, eight hundred square feet smaller. See, that's where the.
That's where the rub is.
Yeah, because I was about to say, you know, look, the garage is, the difference between like.
Like Hillary said.
Cutting off the garage versus leaving the garage is gonna have virtually no impact. And all from the bulk of this, but I'm just going back to my wife walking the dog. So, when she sees this one-story house, or used to see this one-story house, and then all of a sudden.
Anytime she wants to walk the dog, call me, I'll come over.
George, I'll walk the dog up River View Road. Oh, my God. No, but I think it's much more about, that's part of our role.
Yes, but you're right, George, maybe it doesn't have as much an impact on, on the bulk. But it does on the coverage though, because you're taking off a whole garage, which is what, twenty by ten?
Twelve by, well, it's twelve by, you know, it'd be ten by twenty with one car.
It's two hundred square feet.
Right. But I think that if you were to do that.
And to build both of these, you know, and look at the difference in the field would be, you know, I don't think.
My, definitely my wife wouldn't know.
No, but, but it would, but it would get you to a coverage that would be closer to something that I think this board and the ZBA would.
That I understand, that I.
I think what his point is, is that it doesn't make that, it makes, that make an impact to the way the house looks. Or it does in a negative way, if you ask me, if you click one of the, one of the bays off, I think it's been affected in a negative way.
The difference between the two is could be negligible from a viewpoint.
So, if you, you know, if you took that off, it, it doesn't look, you know, somewhat unbound, you know?
It doesn't, that doesn't work.
I'm an engineer and not aesthetics, but you know.
What's, what's the total width of the two doors and everything from the door outside? Right in front of you. Right there, what's the width?
Oh, no, I was gonna get the plan with the dimensions. So, the garage is twenty-three by nineteen, so it's twenty-three wide.
Can you leave it and come in from the right instead of coming?
No, because we don't have enough, well, we need a side entrance garage. Still have a two-car garage. We'd have to be a little deeper because the, you know, I turn it sideways. But then, turning it sideways, you're gonna get the narrow edge towards the house. And then we're gonna increase, well, the driveway doesn't count as coverage, but we're increasing imperious surface and that environmental stuff.
So, is the ground floor plan plus the garage the same layout as what's existing?
Yes.
So, the existing house is over coverage and we're gonna do over.
Over, over.
Over the over.
Right. And so then the question becomes, what kind of impact does that have? So, if you were to say no, and they had to do this with a one-car garage versus yes, with a two-car garage, what's the difference? I mean, I get it from an analytical standpoint.
Well, from a visual standpoint, I think the two, you know, personally, the two carpet, I'm for the application, so don't, you know.
Absolutely, you're doing a great job.
You know, so don't, you know. I'm biased, what can I say? I mean, you guys, you know, decide on the visual, or you'll, you know, your lives. Well, we could look at the side of it if you want, the side of the house as well.
Do you have an elevation of the existing house there?
In terms of, oh, no, what do you, we don't have an existing elevation. But this is the front porch with that, the stairs coming down, and that's the, the living room area that juts out. And again, it's, so, coming to the point about the side not being as high, it's also the front is not being as high because that jut out is only one story and it stepped back to the house. So, this is the front area, you know, on this side.
Maybe Hillary, Hillary would talk it over to you, she was talking about.
What, a half-story with dormers?
That's not gonna, that's not necessarily gonna change the coverage though.
Now, we're talking about just the bulk, the, the impact of this, the coverage, I don't know.
So, so, right, so as you were saying before, it's one-story only on the left, but it's also one-story stepping to the back as well.
I think Hillary's talking about the garage.
No, the garage, well, that sort of is, it's got a piece of roof here, you know? So, again, the second floor is set back from the first floor to try and reduce that bulk.
It's not, it's not that side that's the problem, it's, yeah, it's coming up the hill, looking at it from.
Right, so this, this front wing is, is one-story, and then it's set back to the second story as well as to the side.
Isn't there, up the road, there's a house that's similar, Phil, could it sit back?
So, looking at the second floor plan, we do see that the first floor is here and the second floor is set back quite a bit. See, this is the outline of the first, the roof on the lower level, and so we're set back quite a bit to, you know.
I don't have any answers.
Well, I think it's two things, it's the numbers and then there's the bulk. And for me, it's. I'm just trying to figure out ways that you can either, more trees or somehow.
Well, we could certainly add more trees, it's easy enough, if that's.
Well, again, that hides the house, but if you wanna get to the coverage. The coverage is, take out the patio, which is what I suggested last month.
Um, I mean, that, I mean, that would be the easiest thing, that would be the easy thing to do, right? But people who want a house, wanna have a place to step off to in their backyard. And we felt that, that instead of trying to be, you know, a quick fix and get rid of the patio and we're done, they're gonna come back when, you know, the homeowner is gonna come back when the house is finished and ask for a patio.
Yeah, and then we'll get it for five years.
You know, so we're trying to, you know, be practical as well as be mindful of your, of your thoughts. And that's why we took out the front walkway and applied on the side and some other things.
Is there a deck, is there a deck in the back, there's a deck, right?
Oh, it's a patio in the back, that's true. We have, so what we did was we.
There's nothing there, there's nothing there now.
Oh, now, oh.
Just steps, just steps coming out of the house.
All right, that's what you meant, I thought you meant proposed.
And they're proposing a patio, so take a patio out, and you get the coverage.
What probably happened when you built the house is they realized they were having issues with coverage.
When they built the house, yeah, so. Um, I mean, we personally would like to go to the zoning board and ask and argue our case, but I understand, you know.
Sid, you moved it, but I suggested, take it out. And then your, then your coverage comes closer to being what the coverage, that would be something that the ZBA might accept.
Also, you're doing this.
We reduced it, yeah. I mean, they want, you know, I'm, see, the homeowner has a copy on this here.
If you take the patio out, you only use it in the summertime and in good weather. Put one of these indoor-outdoor carpeting down on top of it.
On the grass.
On the grass.
You also, you also have the covered porch back there, don't you?
Yes.
You know, you can't always get what you want. You get what you need.
Why would you move the garage to, off of Irving Place?
Move the garage off.
Off the side, to the basement on the other side of, off of Irving Place. I know you have to walk upstairs.
It's six inches lower than the street. Okay, so, actually now, Pat had a good.
I'm giving a compliment today.
Pat, you know.
Rob, a good point. You do have basically two outdoor spaces, is what's being talked about here.
For.
Your porch, right?
And the patio.
And the patio. So, I think that, that you're hearing concerns, and it's not necessarily, or at least from my, it's not necessarily about this project. It's about, again, the other.
Yeah, for a while, you know, we understand.
Now, I, I sort of am back to, now you, I think you gotta revise this and think intelligently of how you wanna do that to reduce the coverage, because you are, you do have areas that one could do that. These are, they're not integral to the whatever.
It doesn't kill the house, I mean, you've got your square footage of the house, and you got a covered porch.
It's a practice, the way you can reduce the house somehow that you get the, I don't know, that's up to you.
That's up to you, but. You can solve the issue by eliminating the patio.
Houses in my, is in my expertise, so, you know, I understand what, I, I'll relate the message, you know?
That's where, I think that's where we're at, we still wanna see something on the coverage come down.
They have the right to go to the zoning board, if they want.
Right?
That's the way it works.
Well, that's not the way you've been doing it, that's not the way you've been doing it. Usually goes to the.
The ZBA wants to see something from us.
Wants to hear from us, that it's implied that if we send them to the ZBA, that they're okay with it.
They're okay with it, exactly.
Unless we send them.
And that's why Bruce is yelling at me anyway. Yes, but that's what, so we have to follow that. But there's no reason why they can't go to the zoning board as long as we write something saying that this board is.
Yeah.
Right, in many times, you can get a positive recommendation, negative recommendation, no recommendation at all, so.
Essentially, that's what you guys do.
Yeah, exactly.
This is head to head. So, you tell me whether you're going to the ZBA, because there'll be recommendations from this board. I think it's very simple solution, you take out a patio and walk away from it.
Off to the client and the owner and the architect and see where they wanna go with trying to reduce, et cetera, and/or just go straight to the ZBA and, you know, I personally can't make that decision.
Okay, right.
Okay, can you just make sure that, I know you understand, but that everybody understands that if you do go to the ZBA, that this board.
This board is gonna make the recommendation, negative recommendation. So, we can scratch the patio and then it's.
Oh, no, and.
Give me a square footage on the patio.
Oh, I think, actually, we have a square footage of the house. You have a drainage report, it's in the drainage report, I don't, drainage report, oh, wait a minute. Now, what is, um.
So, we, well, fifteen by, fifteen by fifteen.
Fifteen by fifteen, two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five.
It gets you closer to a, a figure for variance that would be acceptable to this board, probably to the ZBA.
Are you taking the covered porch or are you taking the?
No, the patio.
I would be very comfortable supporting this if you take out the patio. Just, it's not a ten.
I think we got the opinion of this board. Okay?
All right, so.
You decide.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Next matters, twenty nineteen dash oh-nine, Sulu seventy-five, Hamilton. Michael Lewis, architect on the project. Basically, it's a, a sort of a loose-lin existing ranch, fairly unremarkable house. And we're adding a second floor over the entire square footage, except for the garage. It falls within the coverage, the FAR, and the height, no problems. We do cross over the front setback by about eight inches on a front step, which I guess we were confused maybe with the rules in another township when we drew that. However, that front porch is pretty nice the way it is, so I think we'd probably go ahead and pursue that little variance if. so I think we'd probably go ahead and pursue that little variance if, if it's not problematic. Worst case, if we had to cut it back, that wouldn't be problematic either. The thing that distinguishes the project, unfortunately, is the, is the natural water course, floodway and flood zone. You can see it in the site plan. Here's the water course, the AE zone through here. So the house falls within it. And so we're trying to keep our impact to the site at absolute minimal. Whether the only thing that's happening back in the, in the AE zone will be some sonotube footings to support the, to support the deckwork. The rest of the work is happening really above the, above the project. We'll receive the comments from Hans' office yesterday. And predictably, the, the most significant ones are about the wetlands, water course setback, flood zone, and also stormwater. So we'll be retaining Hudson Engineering to help us out and address those, those topics, along with a few glitches in the drawings that I think will be fairly straightforward to correct.
You also saw the comments from our landscape architect.
Yes, sir.
Because it looks like there are some trees here and stuff that should be shown what they are.
Yes, very little, however, very little or minimal impact whatsoever on the trees. So it's a fairly perform, I believe.
And you have some out front and you're having, you have a source stockpile area up here. And I guess if you are going to do some stormwater control here, it's going to have to be in the front yard.
It's a good point. The, the, the stormwater that we were showing was just for the additional square footage. And the stormwater management that's going to be required is going to be significantly more than that based on the comments. So there will be some impact in the front. And, you know, I think we've been through it before. We'll, we'll watch out for the trees.
Okay. Any comments for me, the board members?
Will there be need for a flood zone permit?
Yes, but most of this stuff is outside.
Do we do that or do the, the...
Well, the village. Yeah, the village.
Okay.
And this is a deck, too, so you're just, you're just putting supports and there's not going to be any new structure that's being created.
That's right.
Not taking any square foot, well, a little bit of square foot.
Right, right.
That's right, no, no real grading. It's just going to be, we're going to use sonotubes down at the, for post-footings.
Any comments? It's okay.
Thank you very much.
I forgot to ask if everybody was paid up on their taxes, Sarah, but I'm assuming they were since you didn't say anything.
Yes.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second?